Talk about what, what really is on our agenda. So it's now seven oh five, Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty four. It's a virtual Zoom meeting. It's of the zoning board of appeals town of Cohasset. And five of our members are sitting here. Lee Darst, Mike Dickey, Matt Watkins, Charlie Higginson and myself. As chair and in attendance is John Howland, the building commissioner. And Montana, what is your title now?
I'm still the same until June thirtieth.
Okay, she's, she's here for another, another month. At any rate, I think we should proceed. The last zoning board agenda I have are three items and I have a question about a fourth. But the first one was a special permit filed by Kevin Sullivan to build a single story addition to the home on Great Brewster Road, which has been four or five months now. I believe, has any material, new material been submitted?
Not for this meeting.
Since our last meeting?
No, there has been no material.
Okay, the one question I have, Charlie, I think you were down to write a decision on this, is that correct?
Yes.
And I didn't see a draft decision, is that correct?
That is correct. I thought some of the material we really haven't discussed so that.
Okay.
This meeting.
Why don't, why don't we take this up now and, and, and discuss both what's been submitted and what should be, should have been submitted? And we can move on. Oh, sorry, Charlie, let, let me just very, very quickly. Ninety-eight, one oh four, Howard Gleason. The Norbert Hermans property, Montana, you said that they have requested a continuance?
Yeah, so they submitted a request for continuance yesterday. I emailed you all the letter. Because I did, the letter came in late. Brendan said he would also provide an explanation because he's on their team as well.
In due course, and we have the extension of a special permit granted back in twenty twenty-two. Is that active tonight or is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, one other hearing, and I was recused on it, is one thirty-three North Main. I don't see it on tonight's agenda. Did that get disposed last? Meeting or should that be? Under, under deliberation? I don't know. Dave chaired that, that hearing. But the rest of you probably attended it. I'm just curious, because I was recused. I don't have any.
One thirty-three North Main Street was finalized.
What do you mean finalized?
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the draft was finalized. Yeah, like it's, it's no longer on the agenda, like it's been wrapped. I believe it was wrapped up in April or March.
Okay, is, is that the understanding of the board? I, I was just curious because I didn't see it on tonight's agenda. But I didn't listen in, so I.
I mean, I, I sent out the final draft and they submitted with the town clerk and everything, so.
Okay, so it's done. The decision has been rendered. Okay, okay, no, I just. It just seemed to sort of disappear. Okay, great.
Good at the meeting minutes. I wasn't at the April meeting, but it looks like they deliberated on it.
Okay, okay, so that's why it isn't on tonight's agenda. All right, that's fine.
And just as a reminder, I'm, because I did miss the two meetings when you take up for Great Brewster Trail, just because I know Dave's not here tonight. I, I'm not voting on for Great Brewster Trail, just because I've missed two of the meetings.
Right. Okay. All right, well, the first one is Great Brewster Trail. And let's open this continued hearing, which is filed by Kevin Sullivan to build a single story addition. Charlie, you've sort of been tasked to pull together the salient information, but you said there's information or evidence for that matter, submissions that we haven't really discussed. So could you articulate what those are?
The side towards the ocean where they're tearing down and, and enlarging away. Making it pervious. We didn't, I didn't think we, we finished discussing that. And then the major increase in height and the developing the second floor.
Okay, is Kevin Sullivan or his representative here tonight to?
Yep, I'm here.
Brendan, sorry.
Sure, no relation. The, I, I, from what I recollect, the last thing we needed to get to you guys. Now, the last meeting, when you say there's no submission since the last meeting, the last meeting was canceled, right? Or was?
Right, right, the main one.
We have some in material since the meeting before that, before that meeting, so you.
Right, there was an April second meeting, I think.
Yes, so you should have new material in front of you from the April second meeting. Which was, there was a minor correction in my zoning table on the site plan. And then we were also, we would just, on the architecturals, there was the matter of the north elevation was kind of like the east elevation and so we just changed the designations of the elevations on the plan. That's, I believe, all the discussion. I could pull the, I have plans, I can pull them up if you want to take a look at them.
I don't know how, what the wish of the board is. I, I happen to have a plan here, date stamped April twenty-sixth. But I may be the only one or whatever. But yes, this, this followed our April second meeting and we've had it for about five weeks now.
Right, so the, let me see if I can. There it is.
Okay, so why don't you take us, why don't you sort of presume that we're, have, have had our March hearing or April hearing, if you will, and what's?
So the only thing on, on this one here, if you remember, was the, you know, existing dwelling, we're doing the addition in the back, we're taking up the driveway, removing this portion of the house on the, you know, what would be the left side of the house or the east side of the house, north is straight up. And the only change in here was, I believe I had the, the I had a, I had a, a wrong dimension for the frontage or for the front yard setback, and that has been changed. So then the other, the only other change was on the architecturals. You remember the, so this is the north elevation or the front elevation. I believe this is, this was designated before as maybe the west elevation. And I think maybe the left side was the north elevation. So we had since, we have since changed that, so the front view is now the north. The east is the left side. The rear is the south side elevation and the right side is the west elevation. As it corresponds to, you know, like I said, north being straight up with Great Booster Trail to the north. So those were, those were the only substantive, substantive changes, you know, we've been, ran around this a few times, so we got the, you know, so our, our, our lot coverage and building coverage is down to conforming now. Building coverage is down to twenty percent on the nose, lot coverage is down to twenty percent. You know, because we're removing the shed, removing the concrete driveway. And the, I know Charlie said something about the height, but I, I believe that the height, the peak is staying the same. The peak is not getting any higher than what's there today, which was, which is below, you know, our, our height is, you know, maximum thirty-five feet, we're at about twenty-seven feet to the peak. So I think that's about it.
Okay, Charlie, let me turn it over to you first and then the remainder of the board. Is this a clear to you and does it be, raise any zoning issues that we haven't discussed prior to?
It's, this isn't a zoning issue. I was surprised to see that the height of the structure is lower after the construction than it was originally.
Well, the plan I see has twenty-seven feet, both existing and proposed, plus or minus. And you think it's lower now? The addition may be lower, but the present, well, I don't want to put words in Brendan's mouth. Brendan, why don't you take us through this?
Yeah, so I, the, the, the peak is staying the same. Now, as, as far as I can see, and that's, I mean, that's, you can see the peak there, the peak is, is staying the same. The addition in the back, as you said, is getting, you know, is, is the, this blue area in the back, that, that peak is a little bit lower than what the existing is. But the existing with the chimney on the top, that, that peak is staying. So it's being maintained, it's not getting.
It's not getting worse, you could say the addition is less. Height by, it looks like by a foot to two feet, but no more. Somewhere in that ballpark.
That's what I was trying to say, in the request, they said the present height and then the height there after the construction. And that, that is lower. What I think has been a mistake is that the the new construction is lower than the total height, but the height has stayed the same of the whole, whole, whole works.
Yes, that is correct. So, yeah, so the applicant was, was going to actually get you an updated application as well. So maybe he, maybe he described that in the application wrong, that he was.
Montana, do you know if we have that revised application?
Yes, you should have a revised application from your May packet, which I know all of you picked up besides Matt. So Matt has, I think the past three months, but everyone else should have the revised application, the revised plans that we're looking at right now.
Okay.
I believe the the change in overhaul height is in the revised application. And I just pointed out that this doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I, I unfortunately, the homeowner did that on his own and I don't have a copy of that application.
It, it says that it, the building height existing is twenty-five feet and it's going to be twenty-three feet is the proposed. I'm reading it from the.
Oh, yeah.
Revised, so yes, I can see what Charlie's talking about. So yes, that's. And now you're saying that it's twenty-seven feet according to the plan, so the application's going to have to be amended again.
But I, I think, I think if it's a question of incorrect metrics on the revised application, if somebody would look at that and correct it, we could you know, kind of later on in the hearing, deal with the decision. This is a question of accuracy, not, you know, and, and the permanent record as opposed to anything, I think, substantive, because nothing has changed, Brendan, I'm assuming here, in terms of the red existing, blue proposed?
No, no, the, the, the footprint of a side, nothing is, nothing has changed since the last meeting.
So we can, that will be entered anyway into the into the file, into the record and as the most recently submitted depictions. And if, and if the applicant has, has messed up a little bit with the application, I'll somebody, you, Brendan, or they, or somebody needs a little bit of guidance in things of how to put the absolute accurate.
Right, yep, they, they might have, they might have misinterpreted maybe even from the, you know, my, my guess is maybe they measured maybe from the first floor, because from the first floor to the ground is about two feet, so that's where that.
Well, maybe, maybe you could have a chat with them and.
Yes, I can.
A further correction. I mean, I, I, you know, you, you know, and.
Yep.
Woody, I think you're right. I think the applicant took the height measurements off the architectural plans. Whereas Brendan's measurements are from the average grade. And, and that, that would account for the difference.
Okay, so as long as it squares with Brendan's drawings, fine. And as Lee said, if, if we have to make, you know, one more change, let's do it, let's do it now so we can sort of spence with this matter. Does the board have any other concerns about what's being presented, other than Charlie? I thank you so much about checking on area regulations and realizing that they, there was an error made there. Go ahead.
We had an issue, and now this is only because this is been a while. We had an issue with them removing the cement driveway. Was that resolved at one of our meetings?
Resolved in so far as they said they would, but is that what you're driving at or not?
Well, wasn't there a thing about then if they remove something that's too close to, that's on the lot line? Because that driveway was on the lot line. I, I don't know, it's just kind of rattling around in my brain.
It would still impact coverage. Regardless of where, you know, how close or not to the lot line. I, I don't know, I mean, I don't. I don't recollect that removing it. What's your point? Does removing it, something too close to the lot line invalidate its coverage calculation or something?
I don't think we had that discussion at one point, but I think maybe we must have moved on. It was, I mean, we, our first hearing was.
Way back in December sometime.
Yes.
Way back.
Okay, never mind.
I'm not, as I said, I'm not voting on this one, but I know the April meeting minutes say that the concrete driveway would be converted into a, oh, it says into a gravel driveway to be pervious.
Yeah, and, and Brendan reiterated the change tonight, at, at least from the standpoint of removing the impervious driveway. So I think we can accept that as, as a given, as a statement of intent.
I remember we were wondering whether cha- changing where the driveway is a little bit and also changing the surface. May, it's necessary to take into consideration the five feet setback from the of a driveway from a boundary line.
Yeah, I don't see those as being directly related. Coverage is one thing. Whether it's, you know, in the center of a lot or right up to the lot line and then the requirement of a driveway being set back five feet, but.
Well, that was the, that's the issue, whether, whether. It, it does need to be.
Well, you still have to, let's say it was, it was an asphalt driveway, or it is. That, that counts, whether, that counts towards coverage, lot coverage. Regardless of where it's, where the lot line is, as long as it's on, in the lot somewhere, is lot coverage. So I don't see the requirement to set the driveway back five feet, which is a bylaw issue. Invalidates or compromises any lot coverage.
Whether it's an existing non-conforming exception.
Yeah. It is, but they're, they're removing it to reduce the lot coverage, right?
Yeah. Therefore, is they're removing it and replacing it is the replacement subject to the five-foot setback. That's what I thought we were discussing. I'm not quite sure where we came down on.
Brendan, can you call up, or do you have a, this is existing, existing portion of mine. We don't, we don't have a, a, a drawing here, a rendering of, of the proposed driveway, do we?
Well, it, we're, we're just, with the, the driveway and the walkway are going to be removed and the driveway is gonna, you know, we're taking up the Bitcoin driveway and it's going to stay as a driveway in the same location. I mean, we're only going to have, you know, we're going to have maybe, you know, maybe twelve feet across here, twelve, fourteen feet to park your car. That's the only place to park the car on the lot. So I know there was some discussion about this, but I thought it was, it was, it was resolved. But maybe, maybe, maybe it hasn't, so.
Well, I don't know. My, my personal point of view is that if, if you have an impervious surface and are replacing it with pervious, that's all to the good. And regardless of how wide the driveway is, if you're not narrowing a non-conforming driveway or, or taking something that conforms and making it non-conforming, it really doesn't matter to me. I mean, it is what it is.
I would agree with that. The use isn't changing. We're not getting, we're not making the driveway any closer to the lot line. The driveway is right at the lot line right now and it's Bitcoin, and so we're going to change it to a, you know, gravel driveway and remove, you know, I mean, the the only doorway to the house is going to be this step here, so really there's only eight, not even eight feet between the bottom of the step and the property line. So we really can't abide there with a car, you know, so really the parking area is going to be just this area up in here adjacent to the house. So the, we're not changing the location of the driveway, after reducing it a little bit. We're just changing the, the surface of the driveway, so it's not like the driveway is seven feet off now, we're making it two feet off the lot line.
Right. We're not, we're not exacerbating or making worse any existing non-conformity. You know, in fact, you're improving it a little bit by removing that portion of the main dwelling to be removed. So Charlie, is that, do you answer your concern or not?
Yes, it does. I, I could not remember how we, what we finally said on this at the April meeting. And therefore I wasn't sure how to handle it in, in the.
Okay.
Decision.
I mean, we can come at the deliberation point, I guess, we're, we're trying to get the facts here. And even though we don't have a, perhaps a draft decision, we can we have two weeks and I'm sure we can whip this into shape. But I don't see this as any, I, I, I see this as an improvement, not a, not a you know, kind of some sort of an increased non-conformity. It isn't. They could keep the bituminous driveway as a matter of right, because it, it's a you know, an existing non-conformity. And yet they're making some, you know, sincere efforts to make this more conforming. So I you know, it's, may still be non-conforming, but it's a lot less non-conforming than what exists today. Which, you know, kind of basic, one of our basic missions. So I don't know, I mean, do we need more information from the applicant?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, why don't we?
Woody, before you make a decision, I do have someone in the audience who has their hand raised that would like to make a comment.
Please, yes.
I'm going to pull them in. iPhone seventy-one, you should be able to speak now, you've been pulled in.
If, if, if you could give your full name and address, that would be most helpful.
Well. They did want to speak because they asked a question on the Q and A, so let's just give them one more minute.
Do we know what her, her or his question is?
Um, no, they just, oh, here we go. Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank God, I, I, I would miss most of the connection to me. This is Kevin Sullivan, the owner of Four Great Brewster. I caught some of the meeting. Evidently, there was an issue with the, just for clarification and your purposes of having accurate information. I took it off, I took the height of the house off of the architect's drawing, like I said, twenty-three feet. It's two feet lower than the existing height, so that was all you wanted accuracy, I put it on there. And that's, shouldn't create any problem. As far as the driveway, we are taking off the existing current side entrance, five feet. We're adding it to driveway, so now we're making it wider so it's usable. And we're taking off the Bitcoin and making it gravel so that it's permeable, I mean, non-permeable, I mean, permeable. Yeah, that, that's as simple as that. Everything else has already been agreed upon from the previous meeting. It was just a matter of having clarity of the front setback, I guess there was a misinformation on that. You know, the orientation of north, I mean, that, that's just a map. Look at a map issue. I, I submitted all the documents that I could, that would provide all the accurate information, including that two feet lower. I, I put it in that way to make it clear, we're not going high with the roof so that it falls under the proper guidelines of anything that needed to be done.
Okay, I, I can understand your well intentioned. The proposed column, however, includes existing, the, the metric should be the same, but Brendan, you can help you revise that. I do understand the proposed, the proposed addition is lower than the existing structure, but the
Correct.
The proposed may be, as a column heading, a little confusing to people because the existing prevails, but be there as it may, let's, let's not get all hung up in this. We can just think of, of correction and be done with it.
Yeah, I, I agree. Yeah, I, I agree. I'm, I'm hoping for that. I didn't.
I don't, I mean, if the, does the board have any other, other issues for the applicant or the applicant's representative? Or, or do we feel comfortable that we have enough information to uh render a decision and uh in, in due course? Okay. Anybody wanna? I don't, I don't, I don't see any issues, but anybody else? Matt, Charlie, Lee?
No, I don't.
Matt Mike? No, I don't either.
I'm good.
Okay. So I think we could um, we don't, uh, Charlie, do you have a, a, a draft, draft decision or is this something that we have yet to see?
This is something you have yet to see.
Okay, well, I would, I would um move then that we um continue this hearing until July was at ninth, I think, Montana. Uh, really solely for the purpose of uh uh reviewing a, 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 a draft decision and voting on it. I don't think there's more information required. I'm sorry, we don't have a draft decision tonight, but be that as it may, uh, there's no, nothing further that we're asking the applicant other than Brendan's counsel or advice in terms of tweaking some of those numbers in section eight or whatever it is, say, section eight area regulations in the application. So I've made a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Lee Darst. All in favor? Woody Chitikai?
Carol Higgins and I.
Lee Darst, I.
Uh, Mike Dickey, I.
Okay. So we're all uh, uh five zip on that one. I don't know what happened to Dave because I was talking to him last night, but be that as it may. Um, the next item I see on our agenda is a uh special permit for ninety-eight to hundred and four Howard Gleason Road. Um, we did get a draft decision.
Wait a minute.
What?
I'm.
Go ahead.
No, that was, that was the phone call. I think they need to be dropped.
Yep, I'm going to shift Four Great Brewster out. Um, and for Ted and, or since we're all set.
Right, well, we just voted to continue this uh hearing to uh decide on a, uh, on a decision at our next meeting in uh July ninth.
Yep.
Okay, so that's for Great Brewster Trail. The next one was ninety-eight hundred and four Howard Gleason. They have requested uh Montana a continuance.
Yes, I'm gonna actually pull Brendan back in because we were on an email chain. He said he'd provide a little more of an explanation for their request.
I kinda thought again, that was uh, you know, pretty much uh complete based on submissions and, and discussion. Brendan?
Yes, oh, sorry. I was just.
No, that's all right, sorry.
Getting back on. Um, so for the record, run this all with Merrill Associates. Um, so um, we had a site walk with um so I don't know if you all, well, I'm sure you all know that Carmen has no longer with our company. She was kinda heading this project.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so I kinda took over all of her projects on top of my project, so. Been a little bit of a busy guy, so um, we did have a site walk with Conservation, oh, a month or so ago. Um, and between that I had vacation and uh college graduations and so um needless to say, they had some revisions they wanted to do out there mainly, um, one of them is we have to shift the driveway of couple few feet over. Um, and they also wanna do something with the, instead of doing a Cape Cod burn, they wanna see some other sort of treatment or stormwater device um, on the downslope side of the driveway. So I guess what I'm getting at is that the driveway is gonna be revised uh location wise um a little bit. So that's why the reason we, we needed also some additional survey out there as well to pick up some um um, some um uh, some walls and stuff that weren't on the original plan. So um, that has been done. I'm in the process of going through that now and so that's why we're, we're continuing is because we have to tweak the driveway, which is unfortunately is at the entrance, which is in the floodplain, which is where your jurisdiction is. So.
Yeah, but we will have all that revised uh material well in hand before our July ninth meeting.
Yes, yes, yeah, you will. Uh, cause I, I, once again, I gotta go back to Conservation as well, so um um, but yeah, you'll have that material um by your, for your July meeting.
Okay, well, I, I mean, unless the board has the, well, not unless, does the board have any questions or comments uh directly for Brendan? Otherwise, I would propose that we continue the hearing until Ju- July ninth again to consider a, a draft decision. Dave McMorris was charged with that and, and in fact did a draft, but obviously needs to be revised.
So if there was a draft decision tonight, so once again, I wasn't at the last meeting, um, sounds to me like you guys didn't need any additional information.
Yeah, I'll ask them. Dave unfortunately is not here.
Yeah, okay.
I am the point, but I'll ask my colleagues, uh uh, is there more information you'd like to see from the applicant beyond what Brendan has just described?
No.
I'm, I'm good, Woody.
Okay, thanks, Mike. All right, so Brendan, um, fine, we'll uh um, consider this, discuss it, and I presume we'll uh render a decision on July ninth. So I would make a motion to continue the hearing until July ninth.
Seconded.
Uh, moved and seconded. Woody Chitikai?
Carol Higgins and I.
Lee Darst, I.
Uh, Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Right, and we have a third item, which is a carryover from twenty twenty-two. I think it was twenty twenty-two, yeah, um to extend a special permit, which I guess ran out of its uh where do they get? Two, two years to take action? This was uh by uh John and Catherine Lubitz uh, on one oh three Border Street. We had rendered a decision back in twenty twenty-two. And um, presume is somebody here just to present the information why they either haven't started or, or why they have uh kind of reached a, a, a point where they need an extension.
I, I can update you, Woody, on the building permit application. He, uh, the owner did uh secure a building permit application, extended it and then uh recently hired the contractor to do the work. I think they were scheduled their housing situation to move out this uh summer. Uh, so um, it seems like all, everything in the works now uh for them to take that action. So that was the uh, most of the delay between hiring a contractor and then finding housing uh for the move um, move out, uh, while they do the work.
Okay, now, has there been any change in the twenty twenty-two proposal in terms of uh, you know?
No, it was the, the same, same submittal uh originally from the proposal uh that we received on the building permit as well and uh when they extended the permit and then uh signed the contractor on it's all the same permit. Uh, there hasn't been any changes.
So if we agree to this, they have what? Another two years to execute the um or do they get, is it a one-year extension or a two-year extension?
I would of the safe side, if you could do a two-year extension, but I, I, I think uh one year would probably be ample time to do the work, judging from similar projects of that scope in the area, but you know, there are sometimes unforeseen circumstances, but.
Well, certainly, you know, the construction business in the last couple of years has been uh up in the air for many people. Uh, projects have stopped, started, delayed. It's not a, not a total surprise by any means, at least to me. How does the board feel? Uh, are there any issues uh in granting an extension that we should consider, step back and uh consider renew?
I don't see any issues with it. Um, I think historically, right, we've had these cases here and there where financing or contractor availability, et cetera, has contributed to a delay and it seems like the plan is the same, so I would be comfortable with extending it.
Okay, Mike, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I would have to agree with that as well, but you know, unless there's some uh, something egregious, I, I would think this is, we should.
But if the plans are the same, I mean, it's two years goes by uh kind of a snap of the fingers uh recently, particularly with financing and, and contractors and anyway, Charlie, how about you?
Uh, I see no problem. I'd make it two years. I not sure they could do it all in one year.
Well, I think the key, isn't it, John, to s- to start and, 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 and to make a, an earnest effort, uh, you don't have to finish the uh total project within one year. But I mean, I don't see any, any downside in getting, in granting a two-year, uh, an extension of two years. We certainly met, deliberated and agreed this was a reasonable and then a worthy project and, and uh for whatever reason. Um, I'm sure this is not unique in terms of being delayed. Is that your take on it, John?
Yes, I, I, I think the uh, the, again, the effort with securing off-site housing during the construction will, is a big push to keep the project moving. Uh, the contractor did reach out to me today to, to confirm that, uh, you know, he was coming up to the schedule and would be starting soon, so it, it, it seems like the, the, there's a, a good effort to, to get this done on, on both parties.
Okay, well, I um, do I hear any, any uh contrary points of view uh to the request of the applicant uh to um our applicants to uh grant an extension? And I would propose that the extension be granted for two years. Now I'm simply, you know, to kind of save a little bit on uh having to meet again on a, really a pro forma matter. So I would make a motion to extend the special permit granted back in twenty, June seventh, twenty twenty-two to the Lubitzes for um up to two years to um um initiate and uh complete this project or substantially complete the project.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Sorry, sorry. Uh, do you really wanna say complete the project? No, I guess not. Uh, initiate and uh a good faith effort at the uh, construction. Uh, and obviously if the good faith effort is subverted in some way because a contractor bows out or whatever, that doesn't impact the Lubitz's good faith effort. Um, you know, like everybody else, they're subject to um, another party. So, yeah, Charlie, uh uh, J- John, how would you phrase this? Just initiate the, you know, commence the project or?
Yes, I, I mean, I, I would say uh I think commence might be a better word, commence the project and work towards completion over the next two years.
Right, I'm.
That would, would leave a little open if, if some catastrophe happened or, you know.
I mean, our, our other decisions don't typically have an end date, right? I mean, and the permit does, but in other words, when somebody starts construction, they don't have a deadline by our board to finish it in a certain duration. So I think all you're really doing is I think making a motion to extend the building permit for two years. Does that make sense?
Y- yeah, the building permit is active now, so uh a- again, hopefully the construction will start the next few, few weeks.
And if like two years from now, they were in the middle, say, of construction and still had a while to go, what's that, is that process just through you to?
Yes, as long as they're actively working on the project, the, the permit stays active. Uh, they need a six-month window of non-activity for the permit to expire, but in that six months, they can renew the permit and continue for another six months. So there, there, there's plenty of steps to protect them through the process to keep the permit activated. And there, because what we don't wanna happen is uh, is the permit to lapse and then we're in a different code cycle. So the requirements change. Uh, so I, I think they've made that effort to continue to keep the permit active um a- and ongoing at this point, so I, I don't see any reason that's gonna change.
Okay. So um are we dealing with a one-year extension to activate this or a two-year extension just to be on the safe side? I don't see any downside frankly in the two-year. I mean, I know of three or four situations where contractors have disappeared from town, died, whatever. I mean, it's not the fault of the applicant.
Yeah, and, and Woody just, the, the contractor is also the same one that did the the other project up Border Street, right across the street from the Atlantica. So I think he's familiar with the work and he does have somewhat of a track record uh of being comfortable and working in the area. And, a- and again, with the housing situation, I think, you know, uh, when they leave the house, they they have to get back at a certain time, so I, I think really everyone's on board to, to finish this up as quickly as possible now to the.
Okay, but, but John, are we granting a one or two-year extension?
I don't keep it a two.
Okay, fine.
Just because.
I'm comfortable and I just uh, you know, wanted to, so I would make a motion to uh extend the special permit granted in June seventh, twenty twenty-two for up to uh two years from uh the date of this uh hearing.
Carol Higgins and second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, Woody Chitikai?
Carol Higgins and I.
Lee Darst, I.
Uh, Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded. Uh, Montana, how about offline? Not tonight, but I know you're, if you're working to the end of the month, uh, there's an administrative decision. I'm happy to sign it or draft it, uh, whatever, um.
I will follow up with you via email or phone call to work it out with Cassandra.
Okay, great. Now Ted, I know you're in the audience. Is there anything different? Would you like us to restrict this to six months or?
No, no, but, but thank you for the consideration and um if it's not done in two years, I will have an unhappy wife. Yeah, I don't think I'll be around. My, my wife would have another thing to say about that, but uh, but thank you for the consideration and like John said, we have uh, the delays have been finding a contractor and housing and we're there and it's um hopefully gonna be later this summer is what we're gearing up towards.
Okay.
So, yeah, but, but I appreciate it and um just wanted to make sure we did have enough runway.
Yeah, so you have uh, I think plenty of time to at least initiate, fingers crossed with the contractor. Okay.
Great.
So that decision has been made and rendered. Uh, is there um let's see, the Four Great Brewster Trail. We don't have a draft decision there. Howard Gleason Road, they've requested a continuance. You guys uh have already dispensed with the North Main Street decision that I had to be recused or I recused myself on um, back in April and uh we have just rendered a decision here. Is there any? Oh, there's one other piece of business. It's not before, two pieces of business not before us. Um, but nevertheless, let me just take a minute. I did get a request from um John Schiavo who has that uh mixed-use um, proposal down on South Main Street across. Proposal down on South Main Street across from St. Anthony's. And he has some concern about an abutter, a budding neighbor. With a lot of, uh. In his, uh, in his words, sort of junk in the yard. Uh, John's on top of that. Um. I told him I wouldn't discuss any. Uh, issue or certainly any, uh, resolution. Uh, one-on-one, if he has a. A valid appeal. And it meets the appeal period notification, we could as a board. Consider that, but, um, I didn't want to. Enter into, uh, you know, kind of a deliberation, a one-on-one deliberation. Absent the full board and absent John's, uh. Input, so that's just a heads up. Uh, he may or may not, John, I think, uh, he said he had a, a letter. But.
Yeah, just as a, uh, the, the board, the matter, I, I think, um. We've just got three or four. People that were having difficulty living next to each other, uh, so we're trying to, um. Uh, carefully walk the, the line as to, uh, what's reasonable to enforce and what's, uh, what's not, so. Uh, I was on site today at, uh. Three addresses down there, so it's an ongoing process with, again. The effort to get the, um, the burnt-down garage repaired, some other. Naval things take care of to, uh, side by side, so I'm sure that will. Hopefully resolve itself over the next couple of months.
Yeah, and, and in order for us to deal with it, there has to be a, an appeal. It can't be sort of a judgment call. What do you think? Or would you agree to this or that? I mean, I'm not going to go there. And I don't think any of us want to, so I'm, that's just an alert to the board. The second. Issue was, uh, came up yesterday from Glenn Pratt, you're probably aware of this. Um. Glenn is a longtime citizen, big deal, that has no bearing in our. Uh, consideration. Uh, he has two adjoining lots. One lot has a house, as I understand it. And the other lot. Um, it was subdivided some time ago. Maybe non-conforming, but he wanted to build a, a building there. And, um, not this, it's not an accessory. Building because an accessory building or structure has to be on the same lot as the primary. Is that correct, John? You understanding?
Yes, I, I told him if it was an independent structure, it would have to be allowed. Use in that area as a, you know, I don't think it was a single family home, I, you know, I don't know whether it was a. You know, it could be a.
Either be a storage shed or a barn. Uh, on a, on a lot, a contiguous lot or in a budding lot. Uh, without a dwelling. Now, I, I. I would have thought that if such a structure complied with all the setbacks, height, et cetera, you know, dimensional requirements. Why couldn't someone build a, a structure there?
It, it would just be the use that we have to. Regulate because of, for example, a shed, a pool, a guest house. They're all secondary uses to the primary dwelling use.
So if there's no primary dwelling on the lot, then what happens?
Then is that a loud use? Uh, you know, a separate building, that, that, that's what we're trying to determine, uh, you know, so. Uh. I, I just couldn't find a box to put it into.
Yeah, well, that's the thanks to our bylaws. I mean, how does the board feel? I mean. I went through the bylaws and of course, an accessory. Building or accessory dwelling, a different, um, you know, they're all, they all presume that there's a primary. Dwelling on the lot, but if there's no structure in the lot. And you wanted to build something that didn't violate any. I, it's not use, but any, uh, dimensional. I don't know, I mean, there. Why couldn't you build a? Tool shed? I'm, I'm making this up. He, he didn't talk about use, so. That may be a problem, but let's just presume that use is not a. You know, violates per se. I couldn't find anything in the bylaws that just deal with, if you have a vacant lot, could you put up a conforming structure? I mean, does anybody, can anybody enlighten me or just, just common sense?
And again, my interpretation was just that we, it was more not the structure, but the use and that it might. Where it's. It, it's kind of in the gray area of allowed use, is it, you know, is it, so I, I, I think that it might be. Done under a special permit and that way it just restricts the use to what it is, you know. A structure, standalone structure, uh, on a, a single lot for the purpose of. Storage or whatever the, you know, uh, residential storage, so.
Mm-hmm.
That, that I thought might be a better venue, it just.
Yeah, I wa- I was afraid that relief might require a variance and I thought that might be overkill for. On a vacant lot to build a conforming structure or a non. Controversial structure.
Yeah, I, I think by re- by. Restricting the use, um. You know, that it complies with it so that it can't be used as a dwelling in the future, I think would be the. Protection that it would, you know, that I think would meet the standard of a section six finding rather than. A variance, but that, you know, uh, see how the board feels about that, but I, that, that was the trouble I was having just that. Uh, you know, it, it, it wasn't a matter of direct right, but it was, you know, it wasn't not allowed directly either.
Part of the problem i- is that our bylaws, it, 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 you know, in, in some cases are very vague. Or, or there's a, a void. Um, this seems to be one of them, but how does the board feel? I mean, I, I, I know we typically don't try to give advice. To someone, but in this case.
Did you say it's a separate vacant lot?
Vacant lot, he owns two lots apparently.
There's a separate vacant lot that he wants and. And if he wanted to build a building that conforms. Which he's able, like. Right, then he could, uh, to John's point, as long as he wasn't building like a, uh, commercial building in a residential. Zone.
He did tell me that the, that the, this vacant lot. Uh, when it was subdivided, um, is short about three inches. Literally three inches of the fifty-foot frontage, so it's a non-conforming lot. And technically at least. It, you couldn't build a dwelling there unless you granted a variance, but that was a mistake or whatever, a scrivener's mistake, but it's. So be it. So it's a non-conforming lot from a, a, a dwelling standpoint, but it is a. Has adequate, uh. You know. Footage and things. I, I, I think you're right, Matt. I mean, as long as it's. And, and John, as long, to my mind, as long as you don't. Take a, say, I'm going to build a barn and two years later, the barn becomes a house, particularly if it's a non-conforming. Even though three inches isn't, doesn't sound like much. There have been court cases that have.
Yeah, you have three feet is the same as three inches.
Yeah.
Unless he could, I remember that case, remember there was like a derelicts law where the, you know, we had to take. Where there was a taking that resulted in being, you know. Three inches sh- short. I don't know if that's the case over where, what's that on King Street, but, uh. Unless he could come up with that.
So it's probably not usable. Not probably, I don't believe it's usable. Uh, for a future dwelling, uh, short of a variance. But in this case, is John suggesting maybe a special permit for a? A use, uh, a non, non-dwelling use? I don't know, I mean, as long as it's. That would still restrict the use.
Um, I, I guess it would seem to me that the default should be, you know, private property owner. Has the right to do what they want on their property or with their pro- property. As, as long as, you know, whatever is done on the property is in full conformity with bylaws. Why, why would you need a special permit at all?
John, help us.
Yeah, I, I think the special permit would kick in for the use, uh, uh, again. Um, a, you know, a shed or a barn. Standalone by itself. Is not an allowed use, it's a secondary use to the primary use, so without the lot having a primary use. Uh, that we could fill it in to put another structure on. Um, we're, we're looking for that. Bridge to get from the. Allow the secondary use as a standalone use.
Okay, well, again, well, that, that's. With my view, which is, you know, you, you, you have to comply with all of the zoning, you know, all applicable zoning, I just. Um, didn't, but, uh. Long, yeah, it seems to me, as long as you apply with all applicable zoning, you should be able to, to, you know, it's your property, you should have some rights to what you want with it.
Yeah, I, I mean, we could, I mean, the use could be restricted via permit or, or via zoning decision, but. Just so long as it's addressed, I guess, I, I, you know.
I'd, I'd frankly prefer to see it via the, um. Um, building permit rather than a, a zoning decision that. You know, deals with use. I mean, it's, it's, it's. You say it's, yes, it's not. An allowed use, well, it is an allowed use if there's a primary structure there, but if there's no structure. Um, I would, um, flip it around and say, is it a prohibited use? If it's not prohibited. My take would be it's okay. As opposed to, does it, does the strict language in the, uh, bylaw say this is an allowed use?
Yeah, i- if, i- if the. If the board would certainly, you know, kind of. Uh, not in a decision form, but certainly, uh, in a, a practical form. Agree to that, it, it certainly could be regulated through a permit application.
I think it might be. Easier, more expeditious and, um. If it's not prohibited. It's okay. And Mike, isn't that your point of view? If it's not prohibited?
I, to me, that, that, that's kind of the way I would interpret something, uh, um. You know, i- if, if something's not prohibited, then the presumption should be that it's allowed.
Because, because to have a laundry list of five hundred uses, I mean, you know, the. Um. Extension of that would be you'd have to do a list or define every possible use.
Yeah.
And that, that's a, a fool's errand. I mean, we could never get there.
So especially when you're dealing with private property rights.
Yeah. No harm here. I'd be much more worried about a prohibited use than something we hadn't thought of, uh. And John, I think that's where your judgment would come into play.
Yeah, I, I think those, those are some good, good points. And we could, uh, that way at least, uh, we have a little bit of direction.
I'd be comfortable with that. Lee, how about you?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Charlie Higgins. You're okay or not?
Yeah, I'm okay, uh. Why can't he, uh, apply for a variance?
Well, he could apply for a variance, but the tests are pretty tough and a variance. I wonder. Variance from what? I mean, it isn't that he's. I, I'll make this up because I don't. Let's say he's putting up a tool shed. Um, I, I mean, I have no idea, but I'm just.
Yeah.
Hypothetically, um. So what does he need a variance for, from what? To put up a tool shed on a vacant lot?
Frontage.
But frontage ap- applies to a primary. Uh, structure. You know, I mean, you either have the frontage or you don't. If you don't have the frontage, then it's a varying, well. Okay. That would say that you need a variance to do anything on this lot, a vacant lot. To build anything. That seems to me kind of draconian.
I would agree.
I agree, I agree, uh, I'm just wondering how to avoid it.
Yeah. Matt, do you have any?
I mean, most homeowners, right? If you could, if you could actually build a house there, you'd probably try to get like a three-inch easement from whatever's behind it. Right to.
Yeah.
To get your frontage up to fifty and then build a house instead of a shed is what I would dive in.
But that would be a, but he would, and if he couldn't, then he would need a variance.
Yeah. But I wonder, you know, I, I mean, I don't know what the situation is if he's really that. That tight as to being compliant, would he be able to get like an easement that would put him into compliance?
Well, he owns two lots, so he could, and I didn't get into solving. An obvious problem, but, um, could he, uh? I don't know what the other lot is. Why don't we assume the other lot has a couple of extra feet of frontage? And he, since he's an owner of both, he could take three inches from one and give it to the other and make it conforming, but. That's another, I mean. There must be some reason why he can't do that.
Maybe he hasn't thought of it.
Well, I suggested it, but, um. He kept, I don't know. I, I, I think the big thing is that it's not prohibited. Um, a dwelling is prohibited. On this lot, but a, but a, a small. Ancillary structure is, is just not dealt with. On a lot without a primary, uh. Maybe this becomes the primary structure, I don't know, but. That's kind of silly.
Yeah, the only thing I guess to think about it would be like, you know, I don't know how many other situations there are, but if somebody comes in. And has a lot that they were told like, isn't a buildable lot, right? And they're looking to squeeze a. Something on it's buildable, you know, is that? Does that, is that any sort of a precedent? I. I'm in agreement with what you guys said on the situation, but.
I think it's a matter of use. I think a dwelling is a whole different situation. He'd need a variance. Or he'd need to modify his, his land. You know, his, his lot size. But he'd need a variance for that, and if this were, uh. Well, you'd have to almost start there. I, I don't see, I don't see there being accessory. Um, building if you don't have a primary. Structure or business or something else that requires frontage. But I don't know, I mean, this is. I, I prefer to go at least. For the time being with, uh, John, uh, building. Uh, you know, commissioner's decision and specify, you know, restrict the use. Whatever his desired use is, as long as it isn't a dwelling or something that requires a. You know. Adequate legal frontage.
Yeah, I, I think, if, if, as they say, if you feel comfortable with that, we could certainly go about it that way, that way. He still is used to the property, but. You know, if the time comes to make a dwelling, then it could be addressed.
Then it's like, yeah, and that's, that's so crystal clear. Wants to do a dwelling, he needs a legal frontage or a variance. There's, there's no in-between. So. Okay, no, this is just a sort of. Point of view, but if the board is comfortable with that, I would at least. Go with this and maybe, uh, we have one more bite at the zoning bylaw apple in the fall. Um, this might be something that has been, um. Dealt with more clearly, uh, in other towns and bylaws and maybe we should deal with. Um. A non-dwelling lot. In some fashion, maybe, maybe we shouldn't, but. I don't know, Michael. You weren't there last night? Actually, Tom did a nice job on
That's uh, that's what Paula said. Paula said she thought Tom did a good job.
Yeah.
I, I told him that last night. I, I was very impressed by his presentation.
It was very good. I told him that also.
Yeah, and so did I. So um, that, that part's good. Okay, well, listen, um, we can go on and on, but why bother? Okay, I would make a motion to um, adjourn until uh,
Woody, I'm so sorry. Before we adjourn, um, I need you I need you guys to approve the last two minutes in April. And I also want to point out that um, Lee and Dave's um, term is coming up this month. So if you want to renew, um, I can send you the link on the town website. I reached out to Dave. I haven't heard back, but I just want to make sure that was clear um, now.
I already, the day that you sent it to me, I've so it's back to the select board, I believe.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm also
Back with the select, what I pulled it off, I pulled it all out.
Yeah, once you filled it out, the select board will vote, but I just want to make sure you were aware that your term was up and that you were able to connect the link. Thank you.
Okay, and I've also requested um, via of an email to uh, uh, Jean Dipold, who's getting off the board, but as she said last night, still chair. Um, that uh, essentially, Matt Watkins and I swap. I take Matt's remaining term as an associate and Matt takes my remaining two years as a, a full board member. Um, simply because I've been on the board enough and I I I enjoy it and I'm willing to be an associate, but I think it's time for a little movement. So um, no, the no, uh, you know, we talked about this before. I've been, somebody downtown, down in the town hall thought I was being fired. Somebody else thought I was leaving, you know, you know, hissy fit. Uh, neither of those are, I think, are true. And um,
I'm gonna go with the story that you were fired, Woody, just so you know.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good. I mean, been a while. They couldn't get me out any other way. Um, but at any rate, we shall see. But at any rate, um, I'll still be on the board, but as a technically a non-voter, I'll try not to talk so much, so we'll see how how we all vote, uh, the new slate in when the time is right. But it's a good board. I mean, thank goodness. It's a great board, um. So having fun.
I make a motion to approve the the minutes for
Okay, there, there was one thing in the minutes and it was um, um, yeah, it's the April ninth. It's that special meeting we had. It's not a big deal, Montana. But um, on the second page, uh, it just stops. Tom stated Clark Brewer, planning board member is not in support of the changes in coverage ratios. Dave McMorris stated that and there was nothing.
That is my apologies. I think
There's sort of a sentence that uh, and then the first part, uh, Wood Chittick, ZBA Chair, um. You could just say Mr. Chittick or something if you don't want to spell out Woodward and put it in as Wood. Woody, I think is too too um, informal. But at any rate, um, Wood Chittick is the other not a big deal. I mean, who's ever gonna read
That is my apologies. I will fix that and I'll make sure those are in your pockets for next meeting.
Nobody's ever gonna, you know, I mean, big deal.
I make a motion that we approve.
Sure, I do too. With with that, with any, any, uh, you know, minor, non-substantive
Got it. But the edits that Montana is going to make.
Yes.
That she can finish those off. I have one last thing on her leftover to-do list.
Okay, and I would second that. Okay, move in seconded all in favor. Woody Chitik I.
Charlie Higginson I.
Lee Darst I.
Mike Dickey I.
Matt Watkins I.
All right. So.
That is everything. Your next meeting is July ninth and I'm pretty sure Cassandra will be actually taking over by then. So this is my, I'm pretty sure my official last meeting with you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for all your help.
Well, it's been fun. It's been fun.
Thank you guys for your patience with me.
Oh, no, no, no. Listen, I mean, you're off to a great adventure. She's in the Big Apple. And uh, we shall see.
Thank you, guys. I'm sure I'll run into you at some point because my parents still live there, so.
Well, you could always, you know, uh, you know, when we meet, you could always zoom in. Have some cryptic comment, some criticism to make at the board and
Definitely.
We won't be able to touch you at all. You'll be exempt. Okay. Well, best of luck, best of
Yeah, yeah, good luck, uh, Montana.
Yeah, good.
Thank you, guys.
Good night, everybody.
See you.
Have a good one.